A call to order. December 11, 2017 Borough Council Meeting. I would ask that you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible). 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 I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of November 13, 2017. (Inaudible). (Inaudible). Moved in second. Any discussion additions? You're none? All in favor say aye. (Ayes). Any opposed? Any ayes have it. I want to announce an add-on for this evening and we're going to do it next. This is to recognize the service of three of the people sitting here tonight. So, Counselor Miller, Mayor Thomas, and Borough Manager Flanders, will you follow me to the corner?
Whereas Cheryl A. Miller was appointed to Pottstown Borough Council as the Third Ward Counselor on January 6, 2014, and as Council Vice President on January 4, 2016. And whereas Cheryl A. Miller fully and willingly engaged herself with fellow counselors and numerous organizations and in a wide variety of topics presented during the borough buzz which affected the health, safety, and quality of life of Pottstown's 22,000 residents. And whereas Cheryl has been an immeasurable supporter and invaluable resource for the borough's dedicated and professional first responders and the welfare of the disadvantaged canines and felines in the community. And whereas Cheryl's presence in Borough Hall will truly be missed by the hundreds of people that have worked with her and by thousands of people throughout the borough where she has lived and served with uncommon passion and integrity. Now therefore be it and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and town council that Cheryl A. Miller is officially recognized for the outstanding and incomparable service she has provided the borough of Pottstown for the last four years as a member of Pottstown Borough Council. Congratulations.[206.51][206.51](Applause). Whereas Sharon Valentine Thomas took office as the mayor of Borough of Pottstown, Pennsylvania on January 3, 2006, and on January 6, 2014. And whereas Mayor Thomas has willingly engaged herself in numerous initiatives throughout the borough affecting the quality of life of Pottstown's 22,000 residents. And whereas Mayor Thomas has maintained the highest standards of public service and professional integrity during a variety of rewarding and sometimes difficult situations. And whereas in addition to attending her numerous responsibilities as mayor and overseeing the operations of the Pottstown Police Department, Mayor Thomas has participated in numerous community events, parades, and dedications, and has served the greater Pottstown area and County of Montgomery with uncommon pride and humility. And whereas Mayor Thomas's presence in Borough Hall will be truly missed by the Pottstown Police Department, her fellow council members, and staff with whom she has served with kindness and compassion along with many residents that she has counseled, supported, and represented. Now therefore be it and it is hereby resolved by the town council that Sharon Valentine Thomas is officially recognized for the outstanding service she has provided the borough of Pottstown as mayor. Congratulations.[316.52][316.52](Applause). And here's the resolution recognizing Mark D. Flanders for five years of dedicated service to the borough of Pottstown as Borough Manager. Whereas Mark D. Flanders was hired on July 9, 2012 as interim Borough Manager for the Borough of Pottstown, Pennsylvania. And whereas Mark D. Flanders, after an extensive search among 55 applicants, was unanimously appointed on November 13, 2012 as Borough Manager for the Borough of Pottstown. And whereas in addition to effectively attending to his numerous responsibilities as Borough Manager, Mark has served the greater Pottstown area and County of Montgomery by contributing countless hours of his time to the boards of many civic groups, local organizations, and county commissions, and in 2016 through the International City-County Management Association achieved the credential manager designation, the only Pottstown Borough Manager to do so. And whereas Mark D. Flanders has been an invaluable resource to Pottstown's elected and appointed officials who have relied on his professional skills and leadership abilities to bring about many positive changes to the borough, including the creation of the borough's mission statement and establishing core values for the borough employees. Whereas Mark, after serving the borough of Pottstown for almost 40 years in the most demanding positions, including police captain, police chief, and Borough Manager, has maintained the highest standards of exemplary service and professional integrity. And whereas Mark D. Flanders's presence in Borough Hall will be truly missed by the hundreds of people that have worked with him and by thousands of people in the community where he has served with incomparable leadership, respect, and honor. Now therefore be it and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and town council that Mark D. Flanders is officially recognized for the outstanding service he has provided the borough of Pottstown through five years as Borough Manager, and further that he has extended best wishes for a well-deserved retirement. Congratulations, Mark.[478.41][478.41](Applause). (Inaudible). 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 Comments from citizens present?
Stephen Torone.
And we haven't changed, you still have three minutes.[506.72][506.72](Laughter).
(Inaudible) wrote it down to make sure I was under the three minutes. Good evening, Mayor Thomas, Council President Wynn, Vice President Miller, council and staff. I want to thank you for allowing me to address council, and I also extend holiday wishes to all. First, I want to thank the Mayor Thomas and Vice President Miller for their dedicated service to our community. We as a community are grateful for the job you did in trying to improve our town. I've always stated that it's not an easy task being involved in public service, but if done properly, the rewards are endless. Decisions you make at meetings, such as this meeting this evening, will have an immediate impact on our town. Next, to the newly-elected council and mayor, I thank you for serving our community and hope for you positive outcomes as you tackle the issues facing our town. As I stated, public service is certainly not for the faint of heart, and while I'm grateful for those individuals elected, having a choice of candidates for each position always results in a vibrant election process. But for some individuals, I guess it's easier to hide behind an alias and spew hatred and lies on the Internet than to step forward and affect positive change for our community. Finally, I want to thank Mark Flangers for his many years of service to our community and congratulate him as he soon will enter retirement life. It's been an honor working with you as I served on council first with you as Captain Flanders, next as Police Chief Flanders, and finally as Borough Manager Flanders. You exemplified courage and honor as part of our police force and as a distinguished and competent Borough Manager, but most of all, I'm proud to call you my friend. It's also been an honor to be part of a select group of individuals, a member of Team Fire.[633.91][633.91](Laughter). And I understand we have a newly-selected member of our team. However, why this member was chosen, I have a hard time understanding. This person wouldn't say crap if he was standing at it, and sometime literally does at 2:00 in the morning. Keep in mind, as we all will be called home someday, we have to answer for all our deeds and actions in our lives, good and bad. They are all stored on God's cloud. And to those individuals who may feel the need to try and humiliate certain individuals of our community, good luck with all of that. In closing, Mark, some words of advice from a retiree. Mark, I wish the best for you and Sue with God's blessing for health, for you and your family. Travel the world, volunteer in your community, spoil your family and pets, and always remember the retirement credo. Every night is Friday night and every day is Saturday. Thank you, Mark.
(Applause). Bruce Madera.
I want to add my thanks to a number of people, actually to all of you who have -- my sincere thanks to all who have worked very hard on this budget problem, which is a real, real hard problem to work on. I don't get a word that was made public very recently that seemed like it said -- the public notice said the discussion the other night was bizarre. I don't get that. I think the discussion is -- I watched it, Wednesday night's meeting, and it was very, very worthwhile. It's what council should be doing, and you're doing your job for all the money again. I just struggle -- I struggle with people, people in town. Obviously, you just don't put a sign in your front yard and stay home or play around with the Internet. You're here, and some of the rest of us are here too, trying to be part of government, which is what we have in this country, government by the people, said a man named Lincoln. But you're here and some of us are here. That's adolescence in the category with blond people in big houses tweeting every The only problem I have is, are some of us who are very concerned, and I'm very concerned, and maybe I have something to question or offer, and maybe I don't. But some people in this room, and now Mr. Arms just may have blown my argument here by communicating with me, but some don't communicate. I communicate by letter, telephone, don't communicate. And in fact, I tried to talk about the budget about a year or so ago with a financial director. I was generously given 10 minutes. Oh, I got a meeting to go to! And I didn't need two hours, 10 minutes. I will say, Mr. Yerga, we talked recently on some things, and he gave me about 25 minutes, so things are getting better. But I just want to end with that. Thank you again for what you've been trying to do, which doesn't mean I don't disagree with you, some of you, some of the time, you know? But certainly those that are leaving have contributed very much over the years. Thank you very much.
Don Reed.
Thank you, council. Like Mr. Torone, I wrote down my notes, but I grabbed my wife's reading glasses on the way out, so I really can't read them that well, but I'll try to keep this very brief. I'm commenting on the possible tax increase. I read 18% in the paper. And when I first read that, I figured, well, 18%, that's the headline. When they get down to 8%, they'll say they saved us 10%. But I think we need to look at this a little different. I don't have the answers. I don't know the budget. I see Janice's file over there, it's about nine inches tall, so there's a lot of information you have that I don't. But I would like to make a couple, just translate a couple thoughts if possible. If what we are doing is not working, then doing more of the same is not going to fix it. An 18% tax increase is a failure. It is a failure of leadership. It is a failure of planning, not necessarily you people, but it's a failure on somebody's part. We should have been, you know, the hospital was for sale for a while, I think it's called Cardinal Group, there was five or six in that group. We knew that they were going to sell at some point, but 18, I don't think that drives the 18% tax increase. Again, I don't have all the statistics, and there's a lot of excuses why we're at 18%, at least to start. It seems the borough, and even back when Mr. Torone was president, had a problem with decreasing assessments. And I agree, property values have gone down. By raising the, if you want to stimulate more tax appeals, raise it 18%. Next year, you'll be back in the same place. If you raise my taxes 18%, I have to appeal it. It's just what you have to do. You know, property values, you know, are going down because property taxes are going up. I mean, you can have a lot of people say different, but I've had, I sold my house in Pottstown some years ago. My family had it for 45 years. I was surprised at the value. I mean, I really had to, when I told the buyers, oh, you got $8,000 tax bill per year, and it's very hard to tell a buyer it's worth it. Now, we all know most of that is school taxes, but the borough's catching up at this point. My suggestion to one councilperson, or maybe two, and I don't know any councilpeople up here at this point, but somebody's got to step up and show some leadership on this. You know, by being a leader doesn't mean you have to know all the answers, but you have to learn how to ask for help. Some years ago, I ran a committee for the borough, and the first thing I learned is to ask for help in trying to solve the solution at the borough, or trying to solve the problem that the borough gave us. And I hope that council does go out and ask, maybe outsiders, even business people like myself. I ran a store in the north end of Pottstown for 25 years, Evergreen Consignment Company on Spruce and Wilson Street.
You're right, you have three minutes.
I meant my three minutes. All right, well anyways, let's try to knock this down. 18% is just a failure. Thank you very much.
Hmm?
That is the extended citizen comment.
All right, under Subcommittee Reports, Finance Administration. We did meet last Wednesday, and as for this year, we're doing very well. After 93% of the year has gone, we have collected 93% of anticipated revenues and only put out 92% of the expected expenditures. The majority of the discussion during that meeting was on cost-cutting suggestions and reviewing what we might have done differently. Well, the practices this council has adopted many years ago, working with the staff, generated the three years of 0% increase in taxes and one year of less than 1%. I do not fault the staff or this council for what occurred this year. What occurred, we just couldn't predict that there would be 400 or 500 appeals going down to the Montgomery County Board of Assessments. We could not have predicted that the sale of the hospital would take place this year. And it's because of those two main factors, that's why we have such an exorbitant shortfall this year. And we knew contracts with the police and contracts with ASME would increase. We were bound by that. We still have obligations to pension funds. We knew about that. But this massive reduction in assessment could not have been predicted. So, there were members that had suggestions, and they were brought to council last Wednesday night, and I think our Borough Manager will be answering what impact those suggestions will be. We'll talk about that later. Okay? Under Committee Reports, Human Relations. Marsha?
Good evening, councilors. The minutes from the October Commissioners' Meeting is included in your packet and should be posted on the website. The Commission's December scheduled meeting is tomorrow at 6:00 PM in council chambers, and we anticipate council approving the candidate listed on the agenda to fill the vacant position on the Commission tonight. And the Commission hosted its first education program on Monday, November 20, at 6:30 here in council meeting room. The program was very well attended. We had 40 people in attendance. We had our Commissioners. We actually had two councilors present and various members of the community. The program was presented by the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. The two subjects covered were ethnic intimidation and diversity and inclusion. Everyone enjoyed the information shared by the presenters, and we plan to hold more of these programs in 2018. Commission would like to share some December celebrations with you. Hanukkah is the Jewish eight-day wintertime festival of lights. It's celebrated nightly with a nightly menorah lighting, special prayers, and fried foods, and that begins tomorrow evening. The winter solstice is the day with the fewest hours of sunlight in the whole year and in the northern hemisphere. That occurs on December 21st. Christmas is an annual festival commemorating the birth of Jesus Christ. It's observed most commonly on December 25th as a religious and cultural celebration among billions of people around the world. Kwanzaa is a week-long celebration held in the United States and in other nations. The celebration honors African heritage and African-American culture and is observed from December 26 to January 1, culminating with feast and gift-giving. And lastly, New Year's Eve is the last day of the year, so on December 31st. New Year's Eve celebrations usually end with bringing in the first day of January, which is referred to as New Year's Day. On behalf of the Human Relations Commission, we wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season.
Thank you. Let's see. Padita is not here. C is cog. Counselor call. EAC, Mr. Dur.
Good evening, councilors. We did not have a quorum, so we did not have an official EAC meeting, however, we did meet with Mike Linart because this was right after the news came out of the Pollock Park closing. And he basically reviewed the preliminary information that was available from the engineers' reports. Frankly, I think Mike's actions were spot-on to, you know, isolate the area. Until we find out further, the complete report will have some more detail, and he made the information public right off, apparently. The kinds of metals that were there are frankly not a surprise of something that you'd expect from a former scrapyard. The fact that they're still there may be pretty much of a sign of them being pretty stable and, you know, not the kind of really reactive. Those metals all have different variations and mixtures, so therefore the preliminary is a really basic thing. It's going to take the engineer's report, and my understanding is that Mike and the borough has already lined up some subsequent meetings to figure out what to do with the assessment once it comes in, and we're available to, you know, work with them, give an opinion, and provide whatever advice we can on that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Regional Planning, Counselor Prosser.
We had a guest speaker from DVR PC, Karen Wediger. She's a transportation planner, and she's, it's a preliminary way of kind of coordinating some of the, you know, the traffic intersections throughout the Pottstown region. And happy to say that our mini-grants awards have, we've got quite a few, there are over $300,000 for parks in the area.
Okay. Thank you. Plated, Counselor Prosser.
Your notes are in the packet.
Okay, under New Business, Motion to Grant Conditional Use, request of Patricia A. Pesley Gropper to permit the use of the direct retail facility at the property located at 211 North York Street with conditions as stated in the Order of Date. Moved. Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. B is a request for a motion to approve the 2018 budget. Now, I'm going to start with answering some questions that were posed and ideas that were posed at last Wednesday's meeting. Mr. Flanders, you have the answers?
Absolutely. So first, before I get to that, I want to let you know that I was contacted by the headmaster of the Hill School today, Zach Lehman. He said that we had reached out to the Hill School regarding the pilot, as we do every year, and he got back to me and let me know that the Hill School has no intent to change their existing pilot or come to the borough to ask for a change to the existing pilot, which is on the faculty housing. However, beginning, I was assured the beginning in July of 2018 and July of 2019 during their fiscal year, each year they will contribute $100,000 to the borough for the purchase or acquisition of police vehicles, specifically earmark for the purchase of vehicles. Zachs, and also let me know that after the 2019 payment is made, they'd be willing to sit down and have that discussion again moving forward. So I wanted to share that with all of council.
Okay, and just a little bit of question, so everybody understands. We are on some rotational basis of replacing police vehicles.
That's correct.
And right now, we are behind by four?
Chief?
Behind by five.
By five. Right. And because our Borough Manager announced early in August the pending deficit in our budget, I think you were asked not to include replacing vehicles in the budget. Okay. So everybody's clear. We couldn't even afford to put them in the budget this year, and now thanks to the Hill, apparently there will be $100,000 coming mid-year to help you replace what we need.
All right. So at Wednesday night's meeting, I was asked, I believe it was, it was a series of items. I'll go through each one of them. I believe each of you received this in email fashion. The first of which was to determine what the percentage of increase or what the savings would be based upon the elimination of the Public Works Assistant Director's position, which was a new position. That would take the percentage of increase to 18.11%.
We were starting at 18.6?
Correct.
Okay.
The second item that I was asked to look at was the AHuman Resources position. In doing the math, that would take from the 18.6 to 18.47 if that position were to be eliminated.
Why are you not including Assistant Public Works and HR and reducing it instead of increasing it?
I was asked to determine what the savings would be for each of those. It's up to council to decide if they wish to marry them together.
Okay, the last one, did you say?
The last one was the Human Resources position, and if that were to be removed, the percentage of increase would be 18.47. I was also asked to look at the elimination of the Grants Administration position and replace that position with a part-time, part position funded solely by part, and that would reduce the budget from the 18.6 to 18.54% increase. And that would reduce the budget from the 18.6 to 18.54% increase. Was also asked to look at the elimination of donations or contributions that the Borough makes. Specifically, they would be the Human Relations Commission budget contribution, the Senior Center contribution, the contribution of the Montgomery County Lands Trust, to the Visiting Nurses Association, the Historical Society, Funds for Economic Improvement, and the funds that were paid, are paid, given to paid each year. If those were eliminated from the budget, it would go from the 18.6 to 17.84%. The next issue I was asked to look at was the elimination of a finance clerk position, knowing that the hours would change in finance. In doing so, it takes it from the 18.6 to 17.98. Next was asked to look at licensing and inspections, alteration of hours, the elimination of a clerk position. That would take it from an 18.6 to 18.26% increase. Likewise, was asked to look at a public works position with an alteration of the hours there would take it from 18.6 to 18.75. Reason being, there would be a substantial amount of overtime to cover the tasks. Was asked to look at the elimination of the Assistant Managers' position. In eliminating the Assistant Managers' position, you will see a increase of 18.47%. Was also asked to look at the increase in the fire company allotment by $50,000. The percentage of increase would go to 21.26%. Those were the issues that I was asked to look at.
And this takes into account unemployment costs, eliminating positions?
Yes. Unemployment, yes.
Because, I mean, obviously unemployment will end at some point and so, you know, you'll grant, you'll gain better savings over, in the third year. But so I got, I do got a question on one of the things that you said about public works and overtime. I would say at some point, if employees are not able to get the job done in the hours that they're allotted, that the work get carried over to the next day. We're talking about administrative staff position. And married together. All these married together when it's coming up now.
Yes, help me with this because I want to make sure I read this correctly. Married together with the fire increase, it would be a 19.43% increase, correct? Percentage increase.
Please, let me do it, please.
Is that correct? 19.43.
I just suggested, nobody want, nobody want to increase tax, but we should leave it the way it was before and no cut. And then start next year working earlier to prepare a better budget. Everybody make a mistake, but we should live for that. Keep it the same way.
I'm afraid I, I'm afraid I can't live with that. I am not going to vote to increase my taxes by that amount. I'm struggling in this Borough, just like every other resident is. I think we can do better. I think Mr. Manera is right. I think we can do better. I think it is disgrace that we are at this tax increase and that you're saying that it would increase by 19.43% just by adding $50,000 to the fire companies and reducing everything else?
The math speaks for itself, Counselor.
Well, since I didn't actually see what went into your, your math calculations.
You see, that's what I said, it's too late to do any changes and, and that affected more sometimes, more damage than good. If we don't fix it before, you know, it's too late now. We can do something better next year, but nobody want to. I don't want to be increased, but.
But when you say it's too late, we got an email from Dan saying, send me your suggestions on, on what you want to cut, and he heard nothing.
I sent it. But nobody called me. Nobody, nobody get together.
No, no. This was about a month ago. He sent out the email saying, what, what suggestions do you have? Please email them to me directly so we can, and, and he said he heard from no one. Last meeting, we had some suggestions and you're right, a little too late now.
I do like Counselor Kirkland's comment last week that we start an additional task force to come in and do whatever it is possible to make our operation more lean.
Yeah. Mr. Lee, and that's what the Finance Committee is appointed to do and that is what I've been asking the administration to do for months and months and months. Please meet with other municipalities, see how they operate. Please sit down with other municipalities and see how you can streamline your operations, see how they do things more effectively. And nobody in this administration had taken the initiative to do that. And I've been speaking about that since last summer already, not just the last three months.
Just as a point of clarification, that's absolutely incorrect. In fact, one municipality you spoke of specifically was the Borough of Norristown, excuse me, the municipality of Norristown. Every department member has met or been in communication with their counterpart in Norristown and with several other municipalities. This is something that goes on, on a regular basis, but to say that it didn't happen is totally inaccurate.
Well, what didn't happen was any chance of efficiency in the Borough of Pottstown in those meetings because other municipalities run much more efficient and cost-effective than the Borough of Pottstown does. So you met with your counterpart and discovered nothing?
Well, it'd be your interpretation that they run more efficient, but I would suggest that your interpretation may not be totally accurate, but we'll leave it at that.
You shouldn't be feeling guilty on this because you sat with us in finance for years. And so long as there were normal conditions, we were running about as lean as we could. When there was a position vacated, it wasn't filled, when there was a possibility of combining responsibilities, it was done. And you and the rest sitting up here did your best for the, let's say, the last four years, producing, over four years, a less than 1% tax increase. It isn't something of normal business that occurred this time. It is ungodly number of appeals that were successful in Norristown that created this situation. We're probably running more efficient than most boroughs and townships in the county.
500 appeals is a, is a gross exaggeration. There weren't 500 property assessment appeals.
Whatever the number, 400, 300?
190.
The amount is, and even if it were only two, the fact is, our assessments dropped by $31 million in one year. It was like a tsunami hitting us.
The problem is, I, I sit up here and I do feel guilty because Genesis said all along, we have to do something, we have to do something, we have to do something. So while we sat up here and said 0%, 0%, less than 1%, whatever it was, now we're kicking ourselves in the ass because now it's 18%. Because all along, we should have been small increase here, small increase here. And as much as I, I hate to even say, we need to increase the tax, we should have been doing that all along.
And no one wanted to do that because we were looking out for.
Right. So I do feel guilty that, that I didn't follow that recommendation.
But don't feel guilty. We were making the best decision with the information we had available. If we had known this was coming, instead of 0% years, we could have been increasing by 3% and just banking it, waiting for it to happen. I didn't know, you didn't know, no one knew this was coming.
First of all, that is, that is the job of Director of Finance, is strategic planning and projections. That is, that is the very definition of a finance director. Strategic planning and projections so that you can be prepared for assessments that are lowering, which is not new. That is not a surprise to anybody. This has been a trend that has been going on in the Borough for years and years and years and years. That should not have been a surprise to anybody that assessments were lowering. And we should have been prepared for that. We should have been preparing for that. That's our job.
If I were to compromise with Counselor Miller, it's, last year, I wanted to, you know, hire a new police officer immediately. But our budget we passed, we deferred hiring that police officer until later depending how things go.
Who didn't defer? Who was hired?
Did we?
He was hired on time.
He was hired because the vote was over, it was an overrun.
That's not how I remember it. Oh, good. Was he hired like immediately afterwards? But I thought the budget.
We ended up hiring because the police department didn't acquire some of the vehicles that had been approved. And the officer went to the academy and was reimbursed by the state for his attendance at academy. So at the end of the day, it was a revenue, revenue-neutral decision. We were able to do it without costing any more money.
Yeah, that's, but at the meeting, if I remember correctly, we deferred until that happened, correct? In the positions of the Assistant Public Works and Borough Manager, would that be a possibility to defer to that? It may be an expectation that hopefully there might be a large contribution to the pilot program. Or once it's, that's the only thing I can think of.
Once you adopt this tax rate, this tax rate goes into next year and it doesn't matter if you're getting money from somebody else in July or August or September, you adopt this tax rate and that's the tax rate that the taxpayers are going to be paying.
Would you like to explain? Sure. You're right. Under normal circumstances, that would be the case. Because there was a council election this year, the state code allows the next council coming in to actually open up the budget. Although those words may not be 100% accurate, what it means is, the new council has until February 15th to consider changing the tax rate and consider changing the budget. So even if you decide what you're going to do tonight, the next council coming in after it organizes has until February 15th to reexamine everything and determine what should, what can happen. Doesn't mean they have to, doesn't mean they will, but they have the right to do that. The deadline is February 15th. That happens every other year after a council election. So if we were in a different year, perhaps you're right. But next year, you will have that chance, luxury, whatever you want to call it, but at least it's there if the next council chooses to manage it. And weeks, I anticipate using every single day between now and then to enhance and make this budget better. I know Mark is reaching out to other people. I know I am reaching out to other people. There are some lights at the end of the tunnel. I've asked Justin to check with our legislators and see if there is any emergency funding that they could obtain for us. And the moment that comes in, we can open this budget and lower it again. So we have that luxury of time.
And, and what does a budget look like if we just go with eliminating the positions and not including the increase in the fire company allotment?
13.39. And that's with the knowledge that the organization is going to be totally disrupted from being able, being able to deliver services.
That way, I think.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm confused because that $50,000 was an additional $50,000. Why, why would, why would we disrupt services, you're confused? You'd still be giving them the same allotment that you have been giving them, but you're talking about giving them an additional $50,000, correct?
No. When I say disruption of services, I'm talking about the services provided by the Borough, not the fire company.
Oh. I was concerned about fire services.
We know.
And what does? Sorry. What does 13.39% look like as far as the annual tax bill increase?
$117.66 on the home assessed at $85,000.
Can you repeat that?
$117.66 on the home assessed at $85,000.
That's what I said, the whole fight to go now, keep it the way it is, and then we can work it out for a couple of years later.
I don't, I don't agree.
That's the MO of, of council, I feel like, though. We're going to work it out later and we never do. I feel like there are lots of things that go, we're going to work it out, but then we never actually follow through with it.
Well, before, you never consult to other councils. You already do both of you and that's it. But now we should, all the councils do it together during the budget. And that way, everybody put his idea together and work it out.
We all, we all get the proposed budget, though. It's everyone's job. It's not just the Finance Committee's job to review that budget.
And I, and I would hope that if, you know, you're looking at all these appeals to other people, that somebody, the state or somebody would step up and contribute some money to the fire company down the line. So that's something that if, you know, council will carry on with and make sure that you pursue, and we're not going to take any money away from the fire department, we could live with that. And then, you know, there's, you can actually eliminate other positions as well.
Well, at this time.
I have a question for Ms. Lee, the Finance Director. At the Committee of the Hall, you mentioned a number of 100,000. And I cannot remember what you were specifically answering to in relation to the budget. Was it a sequential 100,000 over a number of years or?
I think Dennis answered how much the assessments changed each year.
And so I heard that number. Then I heard 31 million tonight. And how does that number play in?
It's actually 23 million is the, the assessment. The assessment has been lowered 23 million.
Okay. Because there's a lot of numbers that are being objected and this, to me, is a red flag. So it's not.
Going by the, going by the beginning assessment in January until right now.
It's 23.
23 million is what the assessment has been lowered.
Okay. So I've been hearing 31, 3.1, 1.3. And then when you talked about 100,000, you were actually talking about the sequential decrease in the assessments over, okay, so 100,000 into 23. You know, I'm just saying that there's something about these numbers, the way they're being presented, that I think it calls for a possibility to consider a special meeting of council in December 18th.
With the advertised budget on the 19th with 10-day window and for council to come back on December 29th to pass that budget. Because, you know, just the difference between 23 million and 31 million alone is significant in my ear.
But I don't know what numbers they're just looking at. You ready?
That's, that's what I'm saying. There's a lot of numbers are being.
That's why I think a budget presentation would have been helpful.
My, my initial thought after reseeing these numbers here today is that we possibly adopt all these numbers except for I, nine I. And we also, as I said last week, because, you know, we all have jobs or have been on jobs where people around us maybe got laid off or people left. And those who are left have to fill in the gap. You know, I don't believe necessarily that, that the services will be that much interrupted. Because we've all been in that situation on, on our jobs, all of us have been in that situation where people around us quit or people around us got laid off or people around us left and we had to fill in. We had to take up the slack. And, and, and Councilman Armstead said that last week, too. If someone can't do that, then we find someone who can. We find someone who can fill in the gap and get the work done. We've all been through that. Why can't, why can't our workers do it, too? We all have to do it in our jobs. Also suggest that we go ahead next year in the first quarter, specifically the first month and a half, and put together a, a group to reevaluate the whole Borough tree, so to speak, organization and make cuts. That's just, that's just, that's the way you do business. When business come into a situation like we have right now, cuts have to be made. It's sad to do and, and nobody wants to do that, but those decisions have to be made. So, you know, as far as, you know, adopting these suggestions here today. So, you know, as far as, you know, adopting these suggestions here today, you know, and the reason why I'm not too keen about the finance committee that's in place doing it is because some people in the finance committee may have relationships with people in the borough. And we don't want that to be a deterrent from them making the right decision. So, we need people who's away from the situation, on, on a special committee, to be able to look at it objectively and make the right decisions.
And may I count on you to be on that committee?
I can be on that committee.
Good.
I think, I think, though, that Joe, and I agree, I agree where you're going, I agree where you're going, but I think that we should start with our new baseline, which is thirteen point three nine percent. Take the mayor's recommendation and meet on the 18th, get it advertised for 10 days, and then make a decision on the 29th, so that we're starting with at least a baseline that we're agreeing that we're going to make these cuts, we're going to look at it further, and we should be able to make more cuts if necessary to get this budget down to a single-digit number before the end of the year.
I could go along with the elimination of the, is it the Assistant Director for Public Works? Because it does not exist now. And I know this is for future planning, but it appears we can't afford it at this time. And that also has, seems to have the largest, largest numbers in decreasing the increase. It would drop to eighteen point one one. I was considering the Assistant Borough Manager's position, removing that. And I remember, it wasn't too many years ago, we had eliminated that, only to find out that our Borough Manager at that time would have quit without getting an assistant. At least some of you were here in council with me at that time. So, I'm not too keen in that. These other positions, you know, they are small amounts in dollars, but, you know, the windows would start closing. Craftsman coming in for permits to make improvements to our town would either have to make appointments to come in and get their permit, or come to the four hours on Thursday when they're open. The one position, I don't remember which one it is anymore. It actually costs us more in overtime if we get rid of a full-time person. As far as the contributions, I could go along with most of those, but when it comes down to paid, that is the borough's only marketing one. You know, like any business, you're, you're in business to either sell a service or a product, and if you do no advertising and no marketing, you can't expect any new buyers to come in. And we know through the efforts, especially in the last two years, through the efforts of paid, we had people come to town and take over the, what was the old first federal building. Talked to the people who took over the Ellis Mills Building, the PNC Building, two transfers of the New York Plaza. And if you talk to the owners of record today, they'll tell you they didn't get help from banks, they didn't get help from realtors. It was the efforts of our own marketing arm paid that put together the package which eventually brought them here. They're making improvements to the buildings, which will raise the assessments on those particular properties. And they're all for the purpose of opening businesses to attract new boutiques to this area. So, there is no way I would cut our advertising.
I could make the same argument for the senior center, though. I mean, any of these, I could make an argument for why we need to keep it.
Right, but I can make a stronger argument for the taxpayer. And if we, if we do this, if we, if we start at a lower number, and it's going to show, it's going to show our taxpayers, our constituents, that we're willing to take another look at this again. So, right now, so that we don't get any further than this, I'd like to make a motion to start at the thirteen point three nine and defer the special meeting until December 18th.
Janice, before that gets seconded, I want to make sure I read this correctly.
And I need to make a correction.
Okay.
I've had so many numbers flying in my head in the past two days. I just looked this up. Dan is correct in the 31 million assessment decrease. I apologize.
No, no, it's okay.
23 was just the hospital. That's why I had that number in my head.
Okay.
So, I wanted to make sure that I made that clear.
The percentage thirteen point three nine...
Yes.
Does it change in that?
Is that with the fire tax increase?
That's without it.
That is without, that's just the general...
What is the fourteen point four four, I'm reading two lines above.
That was just the contribution.
Just that, okay. Thank you.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion.
Can I just ask a question? I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out what, what are we re-advertising and why are we re-advertising anything?
Aren't, isn't there 10 days that you have to advertise?
For another public meeting?
The only, we've already advertised the budget, we've satisfied the requirement. We've advertised the tax ordinance. There's no other advertising requirement. You can bring that down, you can bring the tax ordinance down, you can bring the budget figures down, you don't need to re-advertise a new budget.
No, don't you have to re-advertise another public meeting?
You have to do a meeting, certainly.
Okay, because we have to, we have to meet together in public.
Okay, well, and again, if it's a special meeting, the notice is a 24-hour notice, it's not a 10-day notice. I'm not sure where we're getting the 10-day.
I thought it was you need to advertise the budget 10 days.
Initially, you have.
If you change it, you don't have that...
No, I mean, the, the budget is not changing at all significantly. Obviously, the rate's coming down. Now, if you decide, and again, this is for the new council, if you decide to open the budget next year, there's a new advertising requirement, but not for this budget.
Okay.
So, you don't need any more notices. You already have everything in place that's advertised to take whatever action you deem necessary. You can decrease the budget amounts, you can decrease the tax ordinance, you can't increase the tax ordinance, nobody's talking about doing that, but you can't go any higher. So, you don't need to advertise any other documents, only a, a special meeting if that's where you're going.
Okay. Still, my motion's on the floor.
Are you basically agreeing with what, with my assessment, with what I put out there?
Right, and I'd like to get it done, I'd like to get this done by the end of December, which I think we can.
Well, you have to. You have to adopt by law a budget with a tax ordinance by the end of December.
But I mean, the reduced...
Which we have.
A reduced.
Or can be tonight. You can do it tonight, or you can do it any night between now and December 31st.
Right. And I have no qualms in meeting one or two more times, even if we have to meet New Year's Eve to get this where we need it. But some of these cuts are going to be very embarrassing to this borough, and it's going to make us look like the hardest borough around to deal with. And could you ask your department heads to speak to these things?
Sure. This is Sheppo. Comment on what the effect of the elimination of one of your staff would have on your ability to deliver the bottom line?
Our third staff position handles all compliance issues. We act as your insurance buffer from all things compliance-related, and without that additional position, we will then have to divide that 2,000 hours amongst the remaining two of us in the office to keep current mandates, DCA, HIPAA. We have a lot of legislation changes due to current administration that seem to keep us busy outside of our current labor relations and benefit administration, workers comp, et cetera.
Do I understand correctly that a lot of what you do up there is mandated?
Absolutely.
Is that yearly $2,000 per year?
The full-time position is a 2,080-hour position.
Okay, so...
So, those hours would be absorbed between the remaining staff.
Okay, so, is yearly position, 2,000 hours divided by whatever makes it a year, divided by two people. I mean, that's, you know...
But that would be two people that also have responsibilities.
I understand that, I understand that, but it happens everywhere.
You're saying that at the end of the day, the borough has to be ready, be prepared to deal with agencies coming in because of compliance issues?
Yep.
And we're going to have to defend against that.
Mr. Flanders, we are the only borough that I know that has less than 150 employees and three full-time people in human resources. If, if we're not dealing with compliance issues with, with the computers and efficiencies that should be able to be done in today's world, I, I think we really need to take a much harder look at that department and all departments. Because there was a time when the borough was, there was so much industry here, there was so much activity here, everything, there wasn't computers then, everything was done manually. We had less employees then, doing more jobs. And our budget was much lower. So, how in a world when everything is more efficient, have we added more people to do the job that people were able to do years ago on paper?
So, you speak of a time where there weren't as many government mandates, and you speak of a time when there wasn't an expectation on the part of society that government would deliver services that typically were performed by people within their neighborhoods. Basically, it comes down to mandates and the changing in society and expectation on society's part.
And I think that we should keep that expectation on society, because government is to govern, period.
All right, what about final...
Mr. Kellert, would you speak in regard to the elimination of the administrative assistant, and then the creation of a part-time park position?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I think when taken in combination, you're...
You might as well speak on the Assistant Borough Manager at the same time.
Right, yeah, I'm speaking of the Assistant Borough Manager and the Grant Assistant. You're taking a dangerous course if you would cut both of those positions. Those two positions are responsible for over $600,000 in grant applications annually. You would essentially be leaving that money on the table to go to another borough or city or township. It wouldn't come back into this town for the, for the park improvements, for the infrastructure improvements, for improvements to, to the airport, and those, those nature of things. The Grant Assistant, you know, also administers a lot of the airport grants. You know, you would likely, to administer those, those are federal grants, and to administer those, and if you didn't have an assistant manager to administer them, you'd probably have to hire a consultant to do that. I mean, quite frankly, there's no way that the Borough Manager could administer all the grants that we have in the pipeline right now. I mean, go, go to the Grants Source and Use chart that I produce every, every month, and look at the amount of money that we're applying for, and the amount of money that we're bringing in, and whether they're federal or state grants, because if they are, they imply a lot more administrative effort. It's really a full-time job, and you can't expect the Borough Manager to do it. And with all the other cuts that you're looking at, I mean, there's no way that anyone else is going to be able to administer or apply for those grants either. You know, that's, that's really the big thing. The Assistant Borough Manager is also the airport manager, so who's going to manage the airport? Are you going to delegate that to someone else? Are you going to hire a consultant to manage the airport? But somebody has to have oversight there, can't just, it can't just run by itself. The communication is a big part of my job, a big part of the Grant Administrator's job. The Grant Administrator administers the website. I administer, as the Assistant Borough Manager, the social media. That would, that would cease. I mean, who else is going to, who else is going to do it? It's very, it takes a lot of time to convey the message that the borough wants. And, and you set yourself up for somebody else giving the messaging for you, instead of the messaging coming from the borough, whether it's social media or anything else. So, you know, those are some of the, just, just some of the ripple effects that would occur from that. You know, the Grant Administrator runs the Citizens Leadership Academy. I haven't heard anyone volunteering to run that to date. So, if you want to continue that award-winning program, you would have to either find someone that can, that can volunteer to do it, or hire, hire a consultant to do it.
And one question. In the grant money, it's money that you don't have to pay, right? But you have to administer...
Usually, there's a match. That match can be anywhere from...
But you have to look for money to work together.
A lot, a lot of times, well, here's a good example, the Memorial Park Grant. We've received $335,000 for that grant. That started with a $35,000 grant from the Health and Wellness Foundation that the borough put up a $35,000 match for. But because we got all the other grants from DCD and DCNR, $35,000 of the borough's match went away. We didn't need to do that anymore because we found matching grants. So, we're not paying anything out of pocket.
It's money coming in.
It's money coming in, and it's, and it's benefiting the families, it's benefiting the community.
Mr. Kellert, let me address a couple of things. One, the Citizens Leadership Academy is my baby with Vice President Derek Perry in Narsetown, so I definitely am supportive of that program, appreciate it. It was never offered to anybody else to run it. It was just assigned and paid an overtime for that without consulting, asking, inquiring anybody. Each department head teaches that class. It is just a matter of combining the emails and coordinating the schedule to, to do that. So, so there, there are volunteers. I would volunteer to do that. I also know there's another community member that has suggested that they would like to volunteer to do that, and actually, quite frankly, we're upset that they were never proposed to, even asked to participate. So, there's other ways of getting things done, other than paying somebody overtime to do them.
Sure, okay, well, that's, that's the first, I've heard that suggestion, so...
It's, it's the first that it's been opened up to anybody else other than an appointed employee. Secondly, I'm not suggesting at all that we reduce grants.
Okay.
I'm just suggesting that we fill in the gaps to administer them.
And who, 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 who that would be left would have the capability to do that? You know, other than myself, assuming that I move into an interim position and have to take care of the authority and all the other day-to-day personnel issues, who's going to administer the grants?
Why can't the authority be combined with public, with, with the utilities? Why can't the utilities director be responsible for the authority, rather than the Borough Manager? I would think that that would make more sense, considering that person is fully certified, educated, has an incredible amount of experience, and much more knowledge than you or Mr. Flanders would ever have in that area. Wouldn't it make more sense for somebody with that knowledge to be responsible for it?
I don't have any answer to that question.
Combining the utilities and public works does nothing to man, to fulfill the obligation of the authority manager.
Well, let's tackle it in two different topics, then. Wouldn't the utilities manager be much more of a efficient person to manage the authority side, rather than a borough manager who has no knowledge of those operations?
My response is a resounding no.
Your response is...
The utilities director has operational responsibilities for both facilities and for the staff at those facilities. He is not responsible for the management of the operation.
But...
To add that responsibility to the utilities director is to essentially do the same thing in reverse, to strap the guy who's responsible for making sure operations are legal with the day-to-day business aspects, which he's not responsible for.
Well, I would propose to say, let's ask him if he's prepared to take on those responsibilities.
No, I will, it would be up to the authority, number one, to, to select who is going to be the authority manager, and number two, what you suggest is, was suggested during the EIP study, and it was thoroughly vetted by Borough Council and the authority at that time, and the decision was made by them that it was not in the best interest of the authority to do that. So, with that said, I would suggest that if that's a direction that council wishes to move going forward, they're going to need to reach out to the authority and suggest that, or pose that theory to them.
I think my, my one comment, just in reply about the communication and managing social media and the webpage, we have, I think it's three webmasters that get a stipend.
Correct.
Correct. So, if whoever is responsible for that, then I think we should look into eliminating those, those stipends then, or vice versa, you know, whatever it is, put the responsibility more on, on those three paid webmasters.
One of those three is in the Police Department. The reason he is in that role is to maintain the Police Department's Most Wanted List and whatnot that, that we, as on the civilian side, have no authority on, and the other two are the primary and the backup.
Third position...
I, I say this with respect, but for you to act, for you to ask us how we going to, to give you the missing work, that's not our job, okay? It's the Borough Manager's job and the department's head's job. It's the borough manager's job and the department's head's job. We tell them what we want as far as what we want to do, and it's the borough manager and department head's job to figure out how that's supposed to be done. Okay? So we don't... We can't sit here and come up with a solution as to how the works are going to be divvied up, okay? That's the manager's job, okay? We're here to tell you the department what we want eliminated and what direction we want to go, and the manager make that happen, basically.
No argument. Council's mandate, if you will, is to tell me what services you wish to get rid of.
Well, you keep saying services, okay? I don't believe that necessarily has to be the case. I don't believe that has to be the case. I don't believe that. I don't believe that has to be the case, okay? I believe that... These are not major cuts we're talking about. These are a few people. I mean, I hate to put it that way, you know, especially the season and all, but, you know, we have to make tough decisions. We have to make tough decisions, okay?
I guess what we're...
And we're not doing major cuts here. This is not major, okay? Management can figure it out. I'm confident that management can figure it out.
Councilor Kirkland, I tend to agree. It's our charge to figure out how to make these things happen, but it's also our charge to let you know that the services can be expected to be significantly reduced or delayed from some of these cuts. I mean, it's... Yes, we can get more people to do... or less people to do the same job, but it comes at the toll of other services.
Mr. Keller, you were talking about removing the assistant manager while we were, and you said why it's needed. And I would ask, Councilor Kopp, you were here when we went through this dilemma before?
I was just coming in when they assigned Erica to assistant borough manager. So I wasn't really aware of what action to take.
I think prior to that is... to that action is when our borough manager threatened to leave because he was being called 24 hours a day, seven days a week, wasn't given time to do his own job.
Well, he did indeed leave, not randomly.
And it was at that time that council decided there was an absolute necessity to have an assistant borough manager. And it was at that time that Erica was moved out from grants administrator, but carried on part of that duty. Over time, that was turned over to the grants administrator when Erica took on more crucial activities in the borough. It's...
You know, other places don't have assistant managers. They have either part-time secretary assistants to help with paperwork. You know, everything doesn't have to be a full-time employee with full-time benefits to get the job done.
I think that sometimes you do need to have representation, whether it's the school district, the tri-county chamber. Sometimes, you know, I can't make it or Mark can't make it, and one of us attends for the other one. But if you don't have representation with these other community partners, the borough can be left out of their strategic planning in a lot of cases. Because you're not there, you don't show a presence, you're not communicating with them. And I think we've won a lot of fruit from our collaboration we've had with the school district, and it's because we're able to have that constant communication and contact. There's just going to be with only one, you know, borough manager position, there's going to be less time to communicate our message, our needs to our partners.
Okay. So what about that one, I...
So next up would be Mrs. Lee to talk about what will be affected by the elimination of the finance clerk position.
Well, it's going to be... I'm not quite sure how the union, the bumping is going to go because I have a tax person that probably is the lowest person. It's going to be a hardship in that we're going to have to close the windows, not take payments, walk-in payments for taxes, utilities. Residents will have to mail, call in, or use their electronic online payment. I would say that the bill lists won't be able to... Checks and invoices won't be able to be paid as quickly as we pay them now, and phone calls won't be able to be returned. We struggle to stay above board right now. When I started, we had two more people. So over the years, those two people left and we did not replace them. So we're at the minimum right now. But right now, there's seven people. There's seven people in the finance department, seven full-time people in the finance department. One person does accounts payable, one person does accounts receivable, there's a tax clerk at the window and utilities clerk at the window. My assistant does the payroll and oversees the staff, and the other person strictly takes care of the utilities. Well, taxes are only collected... Every day. Every day from March till December. And so that... So one person can do utilities and taxes collection? The line will be down the steps and out the door. It's down the steps now. Anybody that comes in to pay their taxes knows that there's a line down the steps because most of the borough residents come in to pay in cash and in person. I come in to pay my utilities. They've never been down the line in the steps. Do you come at the end of the month on the due date? I come on the due date so I don't get a 10% penalty.
You know something? Well, since we... It's too much. It's too much to deal with this. And we're going to cut it here and there. We don't know for sure. They're going to affect a lot of people, a lot of work, and quality of work and extra stress. I suggest that we can leave it away at this tax, and then we can start at the beginning of next year to work and for something better, and we can all come together, all come, we can see everybody's jobs, that way they can learn what they're doing, how they're doing, and how we're getting done, and get it over with today, please.
Why don't we have a vote on the floor in a second?
Public Works, Mr. Yerder. The elimination of a clerk position, your position?
In the Public Works office, we have two administrative positions in there. One of the things that happens every day, and I have no control over this, is the number of complaints that come in. We service not only Pottstown for water, but we also deal with the townships. We supply water to West Pottstown, Upper Pottstown, and Lower Pottstown. So we have to be responsive to the customers. People call in, they have low pressure, they have dirty water complaints some days, they see water in the street. We need to be able to go check that stuff out in a timely manner. If we have a main break, we need to get on top of it. The sewer, we service the customers in Pottstown with the sewers. If somebody's got a backup sewer in their basement, they call us, we go check it out to make sure it's not our problem. Sometimes the mains get clogged up. We just had one the other weekend. People dump grease down the drain, and the grease builds up in the pipes, and over time they can block up the mains. And the trash. I mean, every day, you can count on a couple complaints on trash. Miss pickups, totes disappear, whether it's the red one or the blue one, they disappear. We give out the serial numbers to people so they can hopefully locate them. We go pick them up for them. I don't want people going on somebody else's property and getting in a fight over the darn things, so we tell them, if you know where it's at, tell us, we'll go get it and bring it back to their place. Every tote, every blue tote was assigned to a property, and we had the serial numbers. The same with the red ones. So there's a lot of... And the trash is one of those things where we report it to JP Mascara. We tell the people, call us back if it's not resolved like mid-afternoon or something because if they wait until four o'clock, it's too late. Those guys are usually out of town by then. So we ask them, and sometimes we have to do more follow-up to make sure that they get that pickup, that missed pickup picked up. We also have plumbers, contractors come into the office, they need guidance on how to put a water service line in, or maybe it's a meter problem. They might have leaky meters, they might have a bottom of the meter that's blown out and cracked or leaking. So all that stuff has to be coordinated with our field people. So we make appointments for them because most houses, we can't get in anymore, everybody's working. So it takes time to settle this stuff up, and people can't always get off work or whatever, so we can get into the meter. So that takes time. And there's just a variety of things that happen. Sometimes people call into the building. Whoever gets the call doesn't always know where they should be. Sometimes when they get to Public Works, it's like, we're not going to transfer them somewhere else in this building. We try and help the people if they get to us because by the time they get to us, sometimes they're a little upset. So we try and deal with their problems. If it's something that only, say, finance can handle, then fine, then we transfer them to finance. But there's a lot of times people have questions, how... Why is my bill so high? We can go into the computer and explain to them why this is happening. Every month, we're looking for leaks. The water meter reader goes out and reads the meters, he comes back, we get a list that it's either high. I mean, we look for high reads and we look for zero reads. And then we send him back out to double-check to make sure that those reads are valid. Because sometimes the remote system, the wires are cut off, the head is disconnected, there's a lot of things that go on in the water system that people try and get around the system. And if we don't stay on top of some of that stuff, we're losing revenue again. So we try and make sure that every month... Do we catch everything? No. Because sometimes we have over 100 locations on that zero read list. There's a lot of vacant buildings in this town, and there's a good reason why some of them are going to be zero reads because they're vacant. But we don't know that from the office. Now, yes, there's repetitive locations, and we get to know those over time, but every month when we get that list, we don't know, and sometimes we have to send the meter guy out again.
Mr. Yerder, is an office staff person a meter reader?
No.
So your meter guy is the one that is doing all these tasks?
No, because he's out in the street reading the meters. He's a part-time person.
You have somebody on the street doing these tasks that is not an office person going out in the street and doing these tasks that you are currently describing, am I correct?
There's a meter reader who provides the data or acquires the data, and then it is office staff that takes that data, downloads it, and makes the calls that Mr. Yerder is talking about.
Okay. And you need two office staff to do that?
No. One office person primarily handles the meter reading and the reads and redirects the reader to go back out and double-check some of these to see why. If somebody's cut the wire off on the remote, we're going to get a zero. So he goes back and investigates a lot of these on why, and if he can fix them, he fixes them. So it takes time to do that stuff. If we don't stay on top of this stuff, it's just going to get out of hand. And this person we're talking about is only getting $14,000, comes out of the general fund. The rest is all paid by water, sewer, and trash. And that person also does not take benefits, so it doesn't even get insurance. If that person's not there, my other staff person is entitled to 40 days off every year between vacation, personal, and holidays. So what happens is, that's almost 50 weeks. We're going to have to close something. We're not going to be, I'll keep up. Sure, we can let this stuff go to voicemail and let it pile up there, but if somebody calls in with a backup sewer and we don't get through it for a couple hours, you think they're going to like that too much? I mean, we like to get out there and check to make sure the main is not the problem because sometimes it is. Most of the time, it's not, but it does happen where the main does clog up. And we're trying to stay on top of cleaning the mains and TV-ing the mains, but there are old pipes, a lot of clay pipes, they've got a lot of cracks in them. There's a lot of reason why. Tree roots are another big problem, and we have that constantly where the lateral's going into a building, the trees get into that and clog them up, and the roots actually go down the lateral and get to the main, and sometimes they're in the main. Then we got to try and cut them out. We have special cutters that we can try and cut the darn things out with. But that's a temporary move. Once you cut them, they're going to grow back in six months, so it's a constant maintenance thing. But we...
I mean, that's not an immediate response because I can refer back to a situation that I handled where I had to come before the borough authority and campaign on a homeowner's behalf to get somebody to come out from the borough to look at the main, to ensure that it wasn't the main that was causing the problem with the lateral. And that took weeks because I had to wait for the borough authority to meet, come before the borough authority.
And where was that at?
Fifth Street.
Okay. But we were out there on Fifth Street. We had conversation. If that person had been a little more cooperative, we might have been get to the bottom a lot faster than what happened. You couldn't talk to the gentleman because he had a temper. Anything else?
Thank you, Dr. Next. And finally, Mr. Place, if you could provide some insight as to what will occur with the elimination of the clerk's position or would occur?
Thank you. You talk about licensed inspections. You tasked me four years ago when I came on board to come up with a department and a program that works. You tasked the department with more work, wanting to go to an annual, then changed to a biannual rental program. You talk about workloads. Workloads were increased probably by quadrupled based on the number of inspections, based on being held responsible for the work that was being done. In that program, you were given a list of how many employees and what would be needed. At that point in time, we eliminated one of the inspectors' positions because we went to a biannual. We already eliminated one of the admin two positions. We went from three down to two. We also had that being supplemented by the zoning officer and one of the other inspectors. At this point in time now, you're asking to reduce it down again to one person at the window. We don't have a zoning officer because you asked me to take that duty on, which I will do wholeheartedly. I'm a little upset with some of the things that were said tonight. Dennis, you stated that, yes, you read the budget book, you saw, and it's projected out five years out, that there's going to be a problem. You can't tell me that other people didn't see that. You can't come back at this point in time and say, hey, no, we're going to do no tax increase because, guess what? You did that for so many years in a row. You took out of reserves, you asked for reductions. We gave that constantly, 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 okay? Because that's what we're supposed to do. We are supposed to be responsible, and we are. But in turn, you asked for no tax increase, and you take out of reserves. Now we're at an oh shit moment, okay? The reality check is, it is. 18%? I wouldn't want to pay it. I know none of you guys want to pay it, and nobody out here wants to pay it, but we have to do what's right. The reality check is, the only way you're getting out of this hole is through economic development and bringing businesses in. If you start cutting the services, the reality check is, it ain't going to happen. You're going to wait another 15 years, their property's going to get devalued. At that point, I'm going to go step back before I lose my job.
Mr. Place, we've been waiting for economic development for 30 years in this borough. Now, if you... The reality of laying off and hiring is, if down the line you feel that you need a position and the budget can sustain it, then rehires can be done. It's not... You're not saying that you're never, ever, ever, ever going to be able to fill in these gaps, but you need to ensure that the budget can sustain whatever you're proposing, whatever you're providing. And no, we didn't say we want a zero tax increase, we said we want a single-digit tax increase.
Okay. In 2014, what did you ask for?
Right now.
2015, what was asked for? 2016, I think there was an increase, or was that '17?
And this isn't your responsibility, but knowing those things...
It is actually my responsibility as an employee of the borough.
It's the borough manager's responsibility. It's the borough manager's responsibility when we're saying a zero tax increase for these three years and a single-digit tax increase to make sure that everything is streamlined administratively to make that happen, not yours. The borough manager's responsibility.
It is each and every employee's responsibility, not just the borough's manager. It's council's responsibility, okay? We are to work as a whole. We're here for Pottstown. I don't live here, no. I love Pottstown. I wouldn't be here if I didn't care about Pottstown. I know you care about Pottstown.
Mr. Place, why is it that you did not purchase your home in the borough of Pottstown?
Why is it I didn't purchase my home in Pottstown?
Because the taxes were too high.
Wait, wait. That's got nothing to do with this discussion.
It does when... It does exactly when you say you're here because you wouldn't be here if you didn't love the borough of Pottstown, but you're not here because the taxes are high in the borough of Pottstown. And that's the truth and the reality of many of the employees that are here in this borough.
No, actually, it's a little disheartening when you're at the store at 10 o'clock at night, and even though I live out of the municipality, or 11 o'clock at night because I'm getting medicine for a child and I get questioned on different things. Those issues should be able to be handled during the normal working hours, and if you're asking about cutting the working hours and putting more work onto additional employees, and, Joe, I understand people should be able to pick up the slack, I don't have a problem with that, but when you've already asked for a reduction... But when you've already asked for a reduction down to a certain point, there's certain breakpoint. And either that breakpoint is on the employees or that breakpoint is going to be on the service that's provided. Pottstown's been on a downhill slide for an extended period of time. Okay? Something needs to be done. And it can't be the normal same-old, same-old. And I understand that. That's probably, you know, I've voiced my opinion too many times. The reality check is, we as a group need to figure it out. I probably should stop right there.
Okay. You, you already announced to us that you're down by two people. What happens if you lose one more? Would the window have to close? Or...
Window's going to have to close for certain periods of time. The reality check is, you're going to either have to stall for a minute with other employees to get the work done, and it will be after hours. You're either going to incur a cost of overtime, probably 15 hours a week minimum. You're talking about replacing a person that does 40 hours a week. And if I recall correctly, when I ran the numbers, okay, the reality check is, those two people at the front window, we are already supplementing with other people right now. I have inspectors that go up to help out at the window. I have inspectors that uncover during different periods of time. We take one more person now. The volume at that window, based on the biannual program, based on the property transfers, based on the complaints, based on the regular building inspections, based on the permits that need to be processed, that have to be processed in a timely manner, based on state law. You have the land development subdivision, you have conditional uses, you have zoning hearing applications. All that comes through that office. And that, the two people sitting at the front right now are an incredible help to me. You asked me to take over Maria's spot. No problem. You know why? Because I have good people that work with me, not for me, with you.
So closing that window would prevent contractors getting a permit in a timely fashion?
You're going to have a problem with the permits. You're going to have a problem with the fact that actually, we have substantially gone after people based on Act 90. We've collected an additional probably 130, 140,000 in the past year based on back taxes. And that's by having one person just being able to take time to research that. We have those, you have all the administrative duties. You have scanning that's been put aside. So the reality check, the whole process of scanning the documentation becoming paperless right now is a new point. We can't keep up with the volume that's coming in.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Kirkland, every department asserted that they can't do with any lesson they have now. How are we going to be able to reduce administrative staff based on that assertion?
Well, I was thinking while they were talking, especially about the window situation. Is it possible, okay, I'm making minor modification here. Is it possible to, instead of eliminating these positions, make them part-time? Because then the windows, because then you can schedule them to come in in times when they, when they know the window's going to be busy. Okay? You know, I'm sure there's times during the day, I'm sure the managers and everybody that works there have worked for years and know exactly when those windows are busy and when they're not busy. So if they're a part-time position instead of full-time position, they can be scheduled to come in whenever the limits not to be.
If the part-time staff was available, yeah, it could be done.
Anything else?
That is the list of items you asked me to look at. Unless you want to talk about the fire increase, does that really...
No, I think that's moved.
Just a point of order. I think there's a motion on the floor to aver, a motion and a second to advertise a special meeting. I'm not clear what that date was or time, but that, I think, led to the discussion that where we are now. So from a technical matter, I think we have to dispose of that motion in one form or another.
Okay. And the, the motion to go for it, reduce this to 13%, there's no way I can support that. Because we would be doing a disservice to the people who are coming to the borough to invest in the borough, to make improvements in the borough. And if you want to send out a bad message to all these developers out there looking at us right now, that would be it.
Give them an 18.6% tax increase. There's your bad message. Developers out there now coming to the borough of Pottstown.
They are gladly taking that because when they look at their monthly...
No, they're not.
...payment, which is principal, interest, taxes, and insurance. There's no better bargain in Montgomery County than Pottstown right now. Go try to buy a place in King of Prussia. Compare square foot costs there versus here.
Compare the neighborhood to there versus here.
Okay. Well, there's, there's a lot of good reasons, and we got some letters from some people why Cedarville Engineering is moving in here, why a developer took over the Ellis Mills Building to put in boutiques, the PNC Building. I've seen some of the plans for renovations to be done there.
I'm curious if these people that are, that are coming in and developing here and they're so grateful, and particularly Cedarville Engineering who has come here, and they were awarded the borough contract, the engineering contract. Perhaps they would like to put some money towards the paid position as that is a position that is receiving contributions from different entities throughout the borough.
You know, is it three? Are there three others that participate in it?
You say part-time.
For paid? Part?
So it's the paid board or the, this form from the borough, from Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority, and the school district are the three primary...
But there are others putting money into it.
Yes.
So others are supporting it. We only have a small portion of them.
Well, so perhaps others...
But without that, we won't be attracting the developers and businesses that we need here.
But at the same time, we'll be chasing the residents out because they aren't going to be able to afford to live here.
And some of the businesses that are not accepting an 18.6% tax increase despite what your assertion is.
Okay.
I understand there's already something, do you, do you want to deal with what's already been suggested already or do you want to? Because I have another suggestion. I know there's something already on the table. So how do you want to handle it?
What's your other?
What is the allotment that we give paid?
The allotment is $20,000 straight up for paid, and then there's a $25,000 Economic Development Initiative money. So the total that they receive is $45,000.
Okay. I say we, okay, this is my suggestion. Okay? I say we clerk position, make that part-time.
What position?
The PW clerk position. The HR position, make that part-time.
This would probably go with the special meeting.
Okay. The allied clerk position, make that part-time. Finance clerk position, make that part-time.
So, Mr. Kirkland...
Wait a minute. On, on, on D, 9D, 9D. 9D, we cut, cut paid in half. Contributions to paid, totally eliminate. Everything else, we take out.
What may I understand, I'm starting with cut the contributions paid or cut it out?
A half.
So cut the $20,000 in half?
Two.
Or take the total to $25,000? I would have no way to tell you what...
I think this is at a workshop level now that would get credence to the special meeting.
And then, and then, and then, C, we take out? C, we take out? Or are we abide by what C is?
We take out.
No, we, we just adopt it.
So that's the elimination of the...
Clerk position to part-time?
No, it's the elimination of the grants administrator and the creation of the part-time clerk position.
Okay, well, yeah.
That was what Mr. Keller was speaking of earlier.
We dot 9H. That's, that's my suggestion.
So since I'm hoping, Mr. Kirkland, that other people will also have some suggestions, I think we should...
I'm just, I'm just giving you mine.
We should move forward with, no, 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 because I want to keep, I want to keep yours. And I, and I want to make sure that we meet again in our special meeting and, and discuss it further and see if we can get this, see if we can get this tax rate lower.
Yep.
The motion on the floor is...
The special meeting.
I thought at one point it was to re-advertise a budget, which is unnecessary. So now I understand the motion was to advertise a special meeting. I don't recall if there was a specific date or time for that. Legally, it's a 24-hour notice. It's all required. So you can set the date and time. And just a comment or a reminder, while all the suggestions are appreciated, on any of these positions that might be under and subject to a collective bargaining agreement, the council and we all have to comply with whatever those agreements say. So it might not be quite as easy as or as simple just to say, this, this is part-time, this isn't. And obviously, we're bound by whatever those agreements say. And the administration and staff would have to work around whatever the contractual obligations might be. So I'm not saying any of it is impossible, but there are some limitations that we'll have to work with.
Mr. Garner, with, with that being said, and contracts and unions, if we were to outsource those departments completely, there would be no more contractual obligation in our part, correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And then there would be an obligation to pay the third party that's being outsourced. So we'd have to compare that versus what you're spending in half.
I understand. And that's, that's, you know, what we were trying to do over the last couple of months, which hasn't really been done. So I'd say that we give ourselves a little more time and everybody keep working away. And if, is everybody available on Monday, the 18th? You can pick a time. Mr. Arrows, you can pick a time.
I have to be up to 5:00 because I work in the morning.
Oh, you do it at 5:30?
Yes, I really wanted to.
Is that your suggestion?
Read a champion here until I have to 5:00.
Oh.
Everyone agree to 5:30, only 18?
Okay.
Well, I think you need, the, the motion is to authorize the advertisement of a special meeting on December 18th at 5:30. Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
Okay. You're going to have to call for the board eventually and we're done discussing it.
Yep. So we had a motion, and we had a second. We've had discussions.
Can I add one more thing to this discussion?
Sure.
The $23 million relates to the deficit produced by the sale of the hospital in this budget year, which leaves $8 million to make the $31 million. So in preceding years, the $100,000 trend was noted. So in this year, an $8 million trend is, is an anomaly. I'm just saying that, uh, that's a lot for the trend. So if the trend continues in that vein, which Mr. Lee, he already stepped up to say he's going to be going to make the challenge. So we don't know what the future holds as far as this. But I just noted as an anomaly that 23 million from the sale of the hospital is no longer present. And then the rest is $8 million for 400 homes.
300, 400, whatever.
Well, it's not 300 or 400 or whatever. It's a specific number.
Well, the, the number, the number of homes is not...
Well, $8 million.
Eight million is...
Well, the number of homes means the number of people that went to, to challenge the assessment. So it's a, it's a concrete number.
So that number is only 190 appeals. So is that $8 million from 190 appeals?
No, not. Whatever the number of appeals is. But the result is, by her subtracting, an $8 million effect.
I just wanted to bring it to the table.
We have a motion and a second to meet again on the 18th at 5:30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll be back on this on the 18th.
Mr. President, may I just make a comment? I just, I feel remiss. I'm not a finance person, but I was provided the list of the sheets that we talked about tonight. And while everybody was, I guess, talking about the various suggestions or potential for cost savings, I just went through and added up the, the cost-saving percentage that's listed on the sheet. Now, I, again, I didn't put that together. But when I looked at the seven sheets that provide for savings, when I added up that percentage, and again, we're working off this 18.6% increase in taxes. So I think we're talking apples to apples. As I, as I added up the, the savings on each of these items that you talked about that would save money, my addition said it was 2.53%, which would be the savings rate off of the 18.6% increase. Now, under the math based on these, I'm showing that you take the percentage increase on all those that would save money down to 16.07%. I heard the manager say the savings effectuated would be down to 13%. I'm not saying that number's right or wrong. I'm just using these numbers. And you're not getting from 18.6 to 13. So between now and the special meeting, if there's any inaccuracy with calculations, you should have the right information so you know what you're saving by making your decision. The numbers just aren't adding up based on these sheets, and there may be an answer for it. But I think we should know that.
Sure.
You can't just add them down because...
And Janice, I'm not here to debate you. I'm just saying, I'm looking at this sheet.
I'm explaining that you can't just add them down.
Okay, and that's fine. I'm just saying...
Because each one, there's percentages that go across.
And that's, that's fine. Again, I'm not looking for an answer. I just, I'm just reading it as we're talking.
When I presented it to Mark on Friday, I told him, you can't just take A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and add the differences. It's not going to work.
And, and that's all I did. But I'm just saying, just make sure that it adds up. If we're figuring a budget and we're figuring a tax rate change, it's got to balance at the end. And that's all.
And, and I would suggest too, to the administrative staff and management, from now until the 13th, if we meet, please come up with some other ideas of cuts because I am quite sure that there is much more, whether that be the sale of more vehicles than we have employees for, or, or some kind of cost savings within equipment, within vehicles, within something. So please come up with some other ideas.
Okay. We will not need to address B, C, or D.
No. You want to go with D or hold on?
That's just the fee resolution for next year. You can, you can pass that along to the next special meeting. I think everybody has the resolution. It's entirely up to you. Legal requirement had begun now.
And there could be a change in fees between... Possible. So let's hold on that. Here's a motion to approve and authorize advertisement of a January 2018 Borough Council meetings.
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that?
Just make sure everybody's clear. This motion is only for the series of meetings in January. Once the new council gets organized, the new council will determine what the future meetings are from February moving forward. I further understand that what is being contemplated under this act is that your reorg meeting will also serve as your committee of the whole meeting. So you'll be having one meeting Tuesday night, January 2nd, and will not be meeting January 3rd, as I understand what is being proposed. Just so everyone's aware.
There will only be one council meeting combined. All right, F, oh, all in favor, say aye.
Wait, 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 wait. F, all in favor, say aye?
For the schedule.
Oh, E, motions.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I just have that.
I'd like to make a motion to table it.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
That's a privileged motion to table, no discussion, so it's simply a vote.
Okay. We're going to motion to table it.
I'm a second.
They have a long call.
Counselor Arms?
Yes.
Counselor Kirkland?
Yes.
Counselor Culp? Counselor Culp, Counselor Kirk, oh, I'm sorry.
Two, item F. There's a motion to table it. Push it off.
I didn't hear anybody else say, sorry.
Would you like to table the motion to appoint Justin Keller?
So, if we table it.
We're not good done.
I presume you're going to bring it up again at the special meeting that you've advertised for the eighteenth?
So, it would either be tonight or the eighteenth, can you do that?
Yeah.
What's the difference if we do it tonight or the eighteenth? Because I'm not confident in administration that can't reduce this double-digit percentage, that I want to support that administration for taking over the next meeting.
Who else do you want to hire?
Then what are you going to do, what is going to happen? If we didn't have a borough manager.
Again, this is, there's no debate on this motion, the motion is to table, so it's a yes or no vote.
Vice President Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Paez?
No.
Counselor Proxel?
No.
President Wynn?
No.
Motion denied for Ms. Wynn.
Okay, a motion to appoint Justin Keller as interim borough manager effective December twenty-five, twenty-seventeen, and to approve and authorize the extension of an addendum to his existing employment agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Can we have, this is what I don't like about how we do business. So, it says, uh, the addendum to his existing employment agreement. And my whole thing was being more transparent with the public. So, to me, that should be public. What's the addendum?
Would you like me to go over it?
I'd be happy to. I'd love it.
I'd be happy to, sure. It's a very brief addendum, it's less than two pages. It appoints Mr. Keller as the interim borough manager. The effective date would be the date that Mr. Flanders retires, so that's December twenty-fifth. The term of this interim agreement, or this addendum, would be for a maximum of six months, or until a permanent manager is appointed. Obviously, if we got to June twenty-fifth of two thousand and eighteen, and there was no permanent manager appointed, council could determine what it wanted to do at that point. The only other change to Mr. Keller's employment agreement is that he would receive an additional two-thousand dollars per month compensation to perform the duties as the interim manager. He'd be performing all of the required borough manager duties, but his title would be interim manager. So, that is the extent of the addendum, Mr. Arms, and hopefully, that's transparent enough for everybody.
Any other discussion on this?
At that point, before he'd be carrying the responsibilities of the borough manager and the assistant manager, correct?
Right, at that point, he'd be the borough manager, and since there would really not be an assistant manager, he'd be responsible for all of that, yes.
And unfortunately, we're discussing this, you know, you're not, you're talking about not eliminating an assistant borough manager position, so he would only carry that position at that salary until such time the majority of council had determined to bring on another assistant borough manager. Is that correct?
I think the answer to your question is yes. Council could decide what they wanted to do with their position of assistant manager, yes.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Eyes have it. G.
Congratulations.
It's all fun and games.
G is possible action on zoning relief request of Cary Baloo and Shirley Borders for property tax, for property located at three oh-six North Charlotte Street. And our options are two.
Well, there is actually two forms of zoning relief being sought. One is a special exception, and one is a variance for parking. You may choose to do nothing and allow the zoning hearing board to rule on it. You may oppose some or all of the application, or you may support some or all of the application.
I'd like to make a motion on this, not in favor of it due to the parking situation. I'll second.
I second.
Of a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Can I just either help or clarify, Mr. Arms, what you would like, so we, so I know what you're asking for with your motion? Your motion is to oppose the parking variance request, does that, I understood what you wanted? Correct. Okay. And would you like a letter sent to the zoning hearing board indicating council's opposition to the parking variance request?
Yes.
Is that okay with the person that seconded the motion? Okay, all right, very good.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just wanted to clarify, talking to residents out there, three hundred block of Charlotte, number one, there were seventeen parking complaints in one year in that area. And then, just resident experience, parking is already horrendous. I'm lucky because I have an off-street driveway, but people are constantly blocking it or partially blocking it because there's nowhere to park. I couldn't tell you how many times I've had to call the police because I couldn't get out of my driveway, et cetera. Constant complaints from neighbors. Most houses have two to three vehicles in one space, et cetera. So, I did go out and talk to residents just to, I mean, I received complaints for a while, but I did clarify for some residents.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. H, I am seeking a motion to authorize staff and the solicitor to move forward with Phase Two of the Early Intervention Program Grant, with a cost not to exceed eighty thousand dollars and a twenty percent match from the borough. We've talked about this, there are ways to cover that twenty percent match.
And the reason I think this one is important is because if there is funding available to help with, say, the fire department, and we could get more money pushed into the fire department without a burden onto the borough, I would really, really highly support that.
And the rest of the town.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion?
I just, um, this program seems to be a subjective program, where maybe some actuarial forecasting in the first round would have been beneficial to prevent possibly the situation today, and hopefully, well, I asked them when they were here, and they don't, they don't do that part, but I think that is the part that's missing.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion to grant request from the Culverdale Railroad Preservation Trust for a waiver of the formal land development process for property located in Memorial Park and proceed with an issuance of a building permit application in compliance with the borough ordinances.
So, move.
Move. Moved and seconded, discussion on this?
As long as there's no legal complications with, the solicitor has, has already told us that there is not, then I support it.
This is just to move them along so that we have a full-fledged railroad station by the end of the year.
And they're not asking at this point for any waivers from the substantive provisions of the ordinance.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. J is a motion to approve the concept of a land swap between the borough of Pottstown and the Berks County Redevelopment Authority for a parcel located in Memorial Park and authorize the solicitor to prepare the agreement.
So, move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. K is a motion to grant the request of the Bethel Community Church of Pottstown, five seventy-five North Kyne Street, for an abatement of borough taxes for a period from May twenty-sixteen to December twenty-seventeen in the amount of eighteen thousand, three hundred, forty-six dollars and eighty cents, subject to approval of the Pottstown School District in Montgomery County.
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion on this?
I think we should be clear that this is not an abatement, this is a property that was tax exempt, that was always tax exempt. It was just a misfiling of paperwork, and it was never included in our budget.
Exactly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. L is a motion to extend the existing parking agreement between the borough of Pottstown and YWCA on a month-to-month basis, which includes fifteen spaces in the King Street Lot at thirty-one dollars per space per year, and five spaces at thirty dollars per month. Move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion on this?
Should I say, the thirty-one dollars per space per year?
Per month, maybe month? So, how it's worded? Thirty-one dollars per space.
Right.
Per month.
That's the way the current agreement reads, and it'd be extending that, the current agreement, month-to-month basis.
On a month-to-month basis.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have that. And it's a motion to award the twenty-eighteen chemical bids as follows. And as per the bid tabulation of November twenty-nine, twenty-seventeen, is subject to review and approval of the borough solicitor. First is powdered activated carbon and sulfuric acid to Bentag Northeast Inc. Two is aluminum sulfate to Chemtrade Chemicals US LLC. Three is sodium hydroxide to Univar USA Inc.
So, move.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. And it's a motion to appoint Jamie Ataviano to the.
I think you should say well that vote, since we're still in discussions about the contributions to the various things.
Would you want to have?
The, and, a motion to appoint somebody to Human Relations Commission, when we're still in discussions of funding of various contributions by the borough.
And how does one affect the other?
I guess not, if they're going to, if they're going to continue run without funding, then none, doesn't affect it at all.
It's a voluntary work, they never get paid, doesn't going to affect it, they keep it in, keep it in, it's not. But it should be appointed today. Why wait?
Fill the seat.
See? I mentioned a motion to.
If you run with no funding, I have no problem appointing Jamie today. He's more than qualified.
I put in a motion. I make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, it's a motion to ratify accident of the building permit officer approving a certificate of appropriateness for the following properties. First is one-eleven King Street, and second is one-thirty-one King Street.
So, move.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Eleven is a report of the bills that need a motion to pay our expenses in the amount of one million, six hundred, fifty-two thousand, fifty-three dollars and forty-five cents.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Yes, announcements. Counselor Proxel.
Merry Christmas.
Counselor Culp.
Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Okay, Counselor Miller.
Since I was hoping this would be my last meeting, and it is not, I wanted to say thank you to all the counselors. It was, it was definitely a pleasure and honor of working, fighting with you for the last four years, and two years for some of you. Thank you to the constituents of the borough of Pottstown that had enough faith in me to elect me and stand by me for the last four years. I want to say a special thank you to Councilman Arms and Culp and the Reading Eagle for covering the Pottstown Hall's Santa Pictures downtown. It is, it's very difficult to get anything started in the borough of Pottstown and support for, so I greatly appreciate it. And, you know, that's, that's it, because this meeting was a little more of a roller coaster ride than I had anticipated.
Okay, Counselor Kirkland. Counselor Paez. Counselor Arms.
Merry Christmas to everybody, and good luck, Mr. Flanders, for your retirement, and good luck, Mrs. Miller.
Counselor Arms.
Cheryl, I was really hoping this was going to be your last meeting as well. But, my Christmas wish has been granted early, so I look forward to seeing you in a few short weeks.
Mayor Thomas.
I'd really like to thank God for the strength and the opportunity to stay in position, not just for these two times as mayor, but also having the opportunity to serve as a representative at the county level in a political post for a number of years. And even down to the wire of serving that post, this chanting of, you don't want to do this, you really don't want to do this. But sometimes it's the standing that is the measure of the capacity to move forward. And so, in whatever ways that every interaction with, whether it's been residents, people at the county level, staff, counselors, you name it, it's all been a learning experience, and it's been a baseline. And the challenges have not outweighed the good portions, and I just would like to say thank you to everyone.
To everyone out there, I wish you a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and the happiest and joyous of whatever holidays you plan on celebrating this year. We've all been at it, working very hard since August on this, and we will resolve it. I would tell you, there is still some light at the end of the tunnel. I know, I said earlier, Mr. Flanders is reaching out to other sources to close this in a better light. Mr. Keller is talking with legislators and others to find some additional funding, and I am doing the same. And if we have to meet New Year's Eve to bring this in line, I'm more than willing to work that. So, as for the night, good night, we'll be back here in a week.